Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Hartford Common Council for Tuesday night, December 12th. I will call this meeting to order. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is required in the United States of America and to be a public which stands one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item roll call, Shanna.
The mayor and alderperson Carol are absent and excused while all remaining alderpersons are present.
Thank you. The mayor is out of town. His mother suffered some serious health issues, and he's in Marshville tonight, so that's why he is not sitting in his chair. So let's keep the Maholic family in our thoughts and prayers. Okay, next item unanimous consent agenda, Shanna.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the common council minutes of November 28th, 2023.
Move to approve. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Communications, Shanna, one more time.
So I have two things. The first thing is Patrick Rich of Edward Jones has requested a transient merchant license.
Patrick, you can take the podium. Give us your name and address and let us know what's going on with your transient merchant license.
Yeah, good evening, council members. Thank you for hearing me this evening. My name is Patrick Rich. Address is 543 North 62nd Street in Wauwatosa, Wisconsin, although I am a native of Hartford, Wisconsin. So I did seek a solicitor's permit last year. It was approved for that as well. So just renewing that, essentially, you know, what Edward Jones does, we offer financial and retirement services, and I'm seeking the solicitor's permit just to have the availability, if I desire to do so, to, you know, meet community members door to door.
Any questions or comments for this gentleman?
Is this a door to door, or is this something different? Do you intend to go door to door?
Um, I do have an office space in Hartford on Pike Lake Drive, so I would not be selling anything door to door, no.
Okay, thank you.
Just introducing myself to the community, so to speak.
Any other questions? If not, pick up the license tomorrow at City Hall.
Yeah, you can come to the administration office and pick up your license tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, yeah, tomorrow afternoon should work.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item offices for spring 2024 election, Shanna.
So I'm just gonna update you on the current alderperson race. Right now, for the first district, we have papers taken out on December 7th by Joe Kohler. For the second district, we have papers taken out on December 11th by Dean Curly. Non-candidacy papers were filed by Doug Carroll on December 8th, and the third district papers were taken out on December 5th by Tony Garza. And of those papers taken out, none of them have been filed yet.
Okay. Any questions or comments for that? All right, thank you, Shanna. Now, appearances, comments? Would anyone wish to make an appearance? Anyone wish to make an appearance? Anyone wish to make an appearance? I guess not. Mayor's report. Shanna, I'm gonna go back to you. Appointment of election officials.
So every...
All our workers in first, second, and third district?
Yes. So every two years, we need to reappoint our election workers, so that appointment is up for the years 2024 and 2025. They're all listed out by first district, second district, and third district, and if they have an R or a D behind their name, they were nominated by the Rs for the Republican Party and the D is the Democratic Party. So I'm just looking for a motion and a second to approve these election officials for the years 2024 and 2025.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Jeff and Tina?
Motion by alderperson Turchi, seconded by alderperson Savage, approving the appointment of election officials for the calendar years 2024 and 2025.
Okay, motion has been made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And we need to thank every one of those workers. There's quite a list. There's an awful lot of people that help maintain the integrity of our election here.
Yep.
All right, made aldermatic request. Alderperson Reagan.
I was gonna ask you if you had any, just to jump in.
No, I'm in a different chair tonight. Aldermatic request.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Alderperson Garza? Nothing tonight. Alderperson Turchi?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Alderperson Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Alderperson Kohler?
Nothing tonight.
Alderperson Webb?
Nothing tonight.
Alderperson Phillip?
Nothing tonight.
Well, I'm disappointed. Somebody's gotta wish everybody out there a very Merry Christmas. That should've been mandatory.
Guy in the red.
Yeah, okay. Leap up to me, okay. All right, moving along. Public hearing, a final...
He's got it going.
We're gonna have a public hearing, a final resolution for levying and collecting of special assessments under section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes for the July 22, June 23 weights and measures inspections performed by the State Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection. I will open the hearing. Explanation, reading of notice by Shanna.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM or thereafter on Tuesday, December 12th, 2023, in the common council chambers of Hartford City Hall, 109 North Main Street, by the Common Council of the City of Hartford, Washington Dodge Counties, Wisconsin, regarding final special assessments under section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes for weights and measures inspections for the period of July 2022 through June 2023, performed at AMB Mart Mobile, 743 East Sumner Street, Aldi Inc., 1589 East Sumner Street, Bumper to Bumper, 721 East Sumner Street, Fox Brothers Piggly Wiggly, 1566 East Sumner Street, Hartford Show, 45 South Main Street, Quick Trip Number 655, Inc., 1411 East Sumner Street, Rapid Mart, 2712 East Sumner Street, United Cooperative, 7280 Highway 60, Walgreens Drugstore, 1400 East Sumner Street, Walmart Number 5463, 1200 Thiel Street, and Westside Mart, 529 West Sumner Street. The city clerk's report on the special assessments is available for viewing in the city clerk's office on the second floor of City Hall, 109 North Main Street, between the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday. The purpose of said public hearing is to hear those persons who wish to comment for or against the final special assessments for weights and measures inspections for the period July 2022 through June 2023 dated this 22nd day of November 2023. It was published in the Daily News on November 24th, 2023, and notice was mailed to 11 affected businesses on November 22nd, 2023.
Thank you, Shanna. Explanation of hearing by staff person. Steve?
Sure, I'll take this. Again, this is an annual thing that we do. The first one that we do is actually to allow for the weights and measures, approving weights and measures. And the second one is for the inspection and the final levy and collecting of special assessments. Just a reminder, this is just a pass through for the city. It's a state of Wisconsin action on the businesses that are here.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone wishing to appear for this resolution? Any appearances for? Any appearances for? Any appearances against? Anyone against? Anyone against? Anyone against? Not discussion by council. Sounds good. Discussion by council, sounds good? No discussion by council? All right, then I will close the hearing for action on resolution 3659, final resolution for the levying and collecting of special assessments for weights and measures. We'll look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Reagan, seconded by Justin Webb.
Motion by alderperson Reagan, seconded by alderperson Webb, for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3659.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Standing committee reports, finance and personnel, I'm gonna take a pass and pass it on to alderperson Kohler.
All right. First one is the discussion and consideration of denying the personal property claim in the amount of $614.25 by Maureen Doll.
So again, this is a damaged claim that was brought forward by this individual. Again, whenever that happens, we forward that, we review the information, we investigate into what they're talking about. If there's something that, again, could have caused damage, we will then, you know, fix the issue. But in this case, then we forward it on to the insurance company. Insurance company will review not only what the claim is, but also what we have found, and they will make a determination. Our insurance company, Civmic, basically determined that we should deny this property damage claim because there is no proof that the property could have caused this damage, and the city knowingly had this, knowing that it could cause the damage. So that's really where the big thing goes. If you... So another example is if you were driving and you hit a pothole, is the city liable for that? Only if you can prove they knew the pothole was there and didn't do anything about it. So in this situation, there was a garbage can that cover was covering both the recyclable and the garbage portion. This is on a sidewalk in downtown. The claim was that the wind came up and blew the cover off of the top of it and hit the vehicle, causing the damage. Upon our review of this, it appears that this cover was too heavy to have been blown off to do that, and it actually lines up, the dent in the car lines up with where the cover normally sits on the garbage can, thus making us believe that, again, the person may have accidentally backed into it or hit the garbage can, causing the actual dent. So again, the recommendation of the insurance company was to deny the claim.
And after the committee had reviewed the, and within your packets, they had the pictures, the committee unanimously agreed to deny the claim.
Questions or comments for Joe? If not, we'll look for a motion on this. Alderperson Garza and alderperson... Team Savage.
Motion by alderperson Garza, seconded by alderperson Savage, denying the property damage claim by Maureen Doll.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. The next one is the discussion and consideration of approving the weights and measures license for the Goodwill Retail Services, Inc., which is gonna be a new business going into Hartford.
Yeah, so they're a new business coming into Hartford. They filed their application and they paid their fee, and they're gonna have five point-of-sale systems, which is why they need this license. And that's it. I don't see any issue with it, so.
Okay. Any questions for Joe? If not, I will look for a motion.
Motion.
Alderperson Webb? Alderperson Savage?
Motion by alderperson Webb, seconded by alderperson Savage, approving a weights and measures license for Goodwill Retail Services, Inc.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. The third one on the list, the discussion and consideration of denying the bartender's license for Samantha Rasmussen due to past actions. We have the chief here to explain the situation.
After receiving the application, for bartender's license, I reviewed Ms. Rasmussen's local and criminal histories. I noted three alcohol violations in the past two years, specifically OWI-related, and there was some restrictions put on her as a result of that, and in the last four years, some drug violations. Consideration was given, in this case, to the substantial relationship standard between the nature of those specific offenses and the licensed activity being contemplated. And to that end, even the Department of Transportation on November 21st of 2022 issued her a letter warning of habitual, being a habitual offender. After reviewing that local and criminal history, it was my recommendation that at this time she be denied the license for bartending.
Questions, comments? No questions or comments? If not, we'll look for a motion.
Motion approved.
Joe, alderperson Kohler, and a second by alderperson Garza.
Motion by alderperson Kohler, seconded by alderperson Garza, denying a bartender's license for Samantha Rasmussen due to past actions.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Fourth one on the list, discussion and consideration of writing off is now $290.41 in uncollectible personal property taxes for the year of 2022. And we have Ms. Tim here to give us the explanation on that one.
Thank you. So on your original packet, it did say $1,345.46. That amount did change. We were able to collect the $1,055.05. So just a clarification there. This is something that we do every year. Each year is part of the year-end process. Any personal property taxes from the prior year that remain unpaid are proposed to be written off. For tax year 2022, this amount is now $290.41. This action does not dismiss the unpaid tax, but does recognize the diminishing likelihood that the amount will be collected in full.
Questions or comments for Dawn? If not, we'll look for a motion. Move to approve. Alderperson Turchi, alderperson Webb?
Motion by alderperson Turchi, seconded by alderperson Webb, to write off $290.41 in uncollectible personal property taxes for the year 2022.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. And last one that I have on our agenda is the discussion and considerations of carrying forward $101,357 for the unexpected general funds projects. Dawn, you get another one on this one?
Okay, so this is something we also do every year. Any projects that were done in, are scheduled to be done in 2023 that aren't gonna be completed, we carry forward money for that. So for this year, we are requesting five general fund projects that will not be completed as of the end of the year. The street department is requesting three of those carryforwards. One is for $35,000 for the asphalt paving on Wilson Drive. They're also requesting $40,000 for Kerbin Gutter Project on North Main, and their final carryforward request is for the ready rebound insurance in the amount of $12,000 for various departments. And Steve will give a better explanation on that if you need that. The engineering department is requesting a carryforward of $10,000 for the Independence Park landfill monitoring. There's no timeframe on when final invoices will be received, therefore we need to carry forward that $10,000 to pay those invoices when they do come in. And the final carryforward request is from the Parks Department for Independence Park Ball Field renovations in the amount of $4,557. This work is being done by city park staff and was delayed due to a fall tournament rental. The total carryforward request is for $101,357, which is a designation of general fund balance at the end of 2023. The general fund currently has an undesignated fund balance of $5.3 million, and these amounts will be added to the 2024 budget for the projects indicated.
Any questions or comments for Dawn?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Second by alderperson Garza?
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion by alderperson Turchi, seconded by alderperson Garza, to carry forward $101,357 for unexpended general fund projects.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Joe, thank you. Public Works, we have nothing tonight. Utility, alderperson Turchi?
Yes. Unfortunately, we have two items tonight. We did not have a quorum at our meeting on this past Monday, so we have two items. First one is discussion and consideration repairing a roof.
Yeah, so the roof on the utility building is in need of replacement. It's about 22 years old, and it's original to the building, and it seems to have reached the end of its useful life. We have had problems with this roof over the years, since the beginning when it was put in. However, over the last six or eight years, we seem to have had more problems. We've had staff that's made repairs to it, as well as contractors, and contractors over the last couple of years have recommended that we replace the roof in 2024. So I did budget for that in 2024. We did ask for proposals from four contractors. Three gave us proposals, one did not respond, and we did get the lowest response, or lowest proposal from HIS Corporation at $488. Their proposal met our specifications. It also included a 20-year warranty, and so I'd recommend approval to go with HIS.
What kind of roof is on that building?
It's a rubber membrane roof with rock ballast.
Is it pitched or is it flat?
Flat.
It's flat, okay. Questions, comments for alderperson Turchi? All right. If not, I will look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Alderperson Reagan, seconded by alderperson Kohler?
Motion by alderperson Reagan, seconded by alderperson Kohler, accepting the proposal from HIS Corporation to replace the roof membrane on the utility building's garage and warehouse for a cost not to exceed $128,480.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Second item tonight is discussion, consideration, approving application for sewer lateral assistant funds. Is anybody gonna take that, or you want me to just keep going?
Did you offer to take that one?
I'll take it. If you want. If you want to, you can. Go ahead, Steve. I'm in the giving spirit.
So you're all aware of the fact that we do have a sewer lateral replacement. This is meant to assist individuals, residents within the community, to help them either A in a situation, get hooked up to our sewer, but also, it is also meant to help individuals replace damaged sewer laterals. Problem with sewer laterals is twofold, is it can add ionization of groundwater into your sewer line. So water will find its way into a crack of a sewer line, no matter if it's a lateral or a main, and then make its way to your wastewater treatment plant, which shows that you are actually treating clear water. I mean, groundwater, for the most part, is filtered clear water. So anyways, this is why we promote the idea of this assistance program. And again, we, in the beginning, we got a lot of people to apply for it and receive it. This is the most recent application that we've received in quite some time. So this application, again, you only get so much money to assist with this, but again, she is eligible to, they are eligible to receive it, and based on the qualifications that they have, it is a recommendation of the staff to allow for this assistance. So, and also, once this is given, we still have plenty of money in the budget for 2023 to give out additional funds if requested, so. Any questions on it? Yeah, alderperson Rusty.
This is individuals out in Hillcrest Estates, off of Lee Road, correct?
That's correct.
How many have hooked up to our sewer line out there?
I'll refer that to Joe Phillip, because he asked me that a couple times.
Alderperson Phillip, how many have hooked up?
I'm still waiting for an answer.
No, I gave you that, I gave you that answer like a month ago, and I can't remember what I said. I think it was 10?
It's a little less than 10, as I recall from our meeting.
Was it nine or 10?
My question was, are we meeting the financial goals that we set for the original investment?
And what did I tell you?
Unclear.
Unclear.
It was unclear?
Sure we are.
In his estimation.
The amount of numbers that we anticipated to have by this time, I think we were very close to like one under, that's a Gulf term, but one less than we had thought at this point in time, so I think we're doing relatively well.
Sure. Eight or nine or 10 isn't bad.
Yeah, I always, I think the estimate was like three or four a year or something like that, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was four a year, four a year for the first two years, then two after that, based on the age of the, of the, the program, the...
Septic systems.
Yes, the things that are out there.
Yes, those things.
I'll wait for the five-year mark, see where we're at.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on this sewer lateral assistance? If not, we'll look for, Jeff?
Move to approve.
Alderperson Turchi, and a second by somebody, alderperson Webb?
Motion.
Over here once in a while.
Motion by alderperson Turchi, seconded by alderperson Webb, approving the application for the sewer lateral assistant fund by Susan Burns, 6971 Lark Avenue, at a cost not to exceed $1,100.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, we go all the way down to the city administrator's report, discussion and consideration approving the 2024 fire service contract between the Town of Aaron and the City of Hartford. Steve?
Yeah, so we have four contracts that we now will be under in 2024. Forever, we've had three. So we had the Town of Aaron, the Town of Hartford, and the Town of Rubicon. The first one that we're talking about here is the Town of Aaron. Theirs is the same as in the past. We cover the same amount of their territory that we have in the past, and the increase on an annual basis is based on the increase in, the increased and approved equalized value. So example is Wayne has a property, that's $40,000 property, and a $300,000 improvement. When his value goes up from 300 to 310,000, that 10,000 is the value by which we multiply that out. So we look at the total improved, improvement values of the township, and we then have an increase based on that, and that was agreed upon many, many years ago.
Any questions on the Town of Aaron contract? If not, I will look for a motion. Alderperson Kohler, and alderperson Savage?
Motion by alderperson Kohler, seconded by alderperson Savage, approving the 2024 fire service contract between the Town of Aaron and the City of Hartford.
Any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, discussion, consideration, approving a six-year fire service contract between the Town of Rubicon and the City of Hartford.
Yeah, this is an interesting one, and I think, one that I think the chief and I are very proud of, and the fact of we've had kind of a ongoing relationship with the Town of Rubicon, and with the recent changes to state share of revenue, which if you remember, was supposed to be put towards public safety, number one, right? Police and fire EMS services. And so we, we discuss this with the Town of Rubicon thoroughly, and tonight, they will be approving this same six-year agreement, and this agreement basically gets them caught up. So when we look at how much we charge the different townships, again, it's based on different things. You can look at, you can base it on, again, the improvements of their assessed value, equalized value. You can base it on per capita. I will charge you a dollar figure based on per capita. How many people do you have in that community? How many people we're protecting, so to speak? And the third thing is you can look at is base it on how many squares you are actually covering for them. So every township is divided into territories, and so how many of those sections of the town are you covering? And when you look at that, the Town of Rubicon was falling far and farther behind what we were charging everybody else, and we said this was the time for you to make this up, because, again, you're getting an additional amount of money from the state to do exactly that, to work on special, your police and fire and EMS. So anyways, we do work with them on different options to help them out. This is what their choice was. We gave them a one, a three, and a six-year contract. The six-year contract is what they're doing. And so it spells out for them, for us, what they'll pay every year for the next six years, and then on the seventh year and beyond, it'll be based on CPIU. So like the town... So, like the Town of Hartford, we base it on the CPIU, Consumer Price Index, which comes out in September. So, this is a good agreement for us. It gets this, this township back up to speed over a period of time. And again, it, it secures us having to protect them, not only with fire, but EMS for the foreseeable six years, so. It's, it's a, it's a win-win.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions on Town Rubicon? So, they're, they're voting theirs this tonight, so if we vote, it would basically go in as long as they agree to their, which probably won't be a problem, but. We assume that. Yeah. Sure.
We're told by their town board of three that they are ready to agree to this tonight.
Two might be absent. Two might be absent.
I don't know if you got a quorum there.
All right. Yeah, and that, the reason I asked that was because he did mention that they're voting on it tonight as well, so. Whether it's, if we vote on it, it passes, and they vote on it, it passes, and we're going to. Yeah, we'll assume it's favorable. If it doesn't pass there, we'll assume it's not here. Sure. Okay.
You know, keep in mind, if somebody wouldn't pass it, January 1st, they're on their own. Grab a bucket and a Band-Aid. We don't, we don't like to say that, but I mean, that's, that, truly, that's what we're dealing with here in these agreements, is the fact of, you better have somebody to back us up than if you're not going to have a contract with us starting January 1st. Yes.
What did they pay in 2023?
What is what?
What did they pay in 2023?
Oh, that's a good question. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but I know it was about 14% less than that was. So, if you look at this, it's actually, over time, it'll be about a 65% increase to get them caught up.
Sure. Elder Person Garza?
And even though they've been paying not what they should be, we've still been providing our services 100% as needed, so. It's, it's just one way for us to recoup some of our, our usage.
You know, I mean, that's, that's a battle that everyone in the state of Wisconsin has, and I think I preached this before. But if you know of any elected official higher than us, local level, but on a state level, if you want to give them a good recommendation, is they should standardize how townships pay for services for EMS and fire. We've had this discussion in Dodge County, we have this discussion in Washington County. These agreements go back to, you know, the 1970s, and when somebody at the township, you know, said, well, we're only going to pay you X amount every year more and all that kind of stuff, and then the next township was different, another township was different. And communities like us, or in the city of West Bend, they, they have these different contracts with different townships, and it makes no sense. They all should be equalized, and they all should be the same, and the fire departments should all get the same. Because the problem is, is that I say I'm going to cover your township, but I have a fire, guess what? I call mutual aid. Now, if I don't have a contract, if you don't have a contract with us, but I get calls for mutual anyways, because I'm the biggest dog on the block, in Town of Rubicon I would be, I gotta still help. And we will help, and we will be there. We'll be the fastest and have the most equipment and the best trained people. But we're not getting paid to do that. That's, again, a huge problem that the state needs to fix. I'm done preaching now.
So what happens on, and they call it a Mavis box alarm, when there's a fire in the Osho and they call six other departments to come in?
Yeah.
Those departments don't get paid anything, do they?
We can get paid, yes.
You can get paid?
Yeah. Yeah, so we, it depends upon the situation, but a lot of times, we will get, we will make, we will get something for attending and handling, handling our portion of it. But keep in mind, when we're in a mutual aid box, we're usually sending like one truck and three guys.
Sure.
You know, unlike the movers, two guys and a truck.
Let's say we have a major house fire out on the north edge of town.
Yeah.
Hartford handles it, but they bring in Slinger, they bring in St. Lawrence, they bring in Allington.
Yeah.
Are those departments going to get paid for coming to our fire? Or is it just a general mutual aid?
It depends upon the situation. If it's, you know, remember the situation which we had over in the town, Village of Slinger, with the, the issue we had with the pallet company with the fire there?
Sure.
In those situations, we can actually get paid on those.
Oh, okay.
If you're there for an extended period of time and things like that.
Sure. So, mutual aid isn't just a nice favor type thing. Somebody's going to get paid.
Uh, someone, but if it's, if it's a quick in and out, you won't.
You won't, sure.
So, a small, a small garage fire, you're probably not going to get paid, only the, only the company that actually gets paid to do it.
Right. But the one on 41, obviously, was a day and a half project, so.
Yeah, yeah. And again, that's why, that's why, again, the state needs to do something about that to get it through to that, all, everything should be equalized.
Certainly.
So that everyone pays the same. And then also, of course, is trying to get everyone to agree on the level of service with EMS, so that everyone gets equally served.
Sure.
A paramedic is not the same as a basic EMT.
Of course. Yep. All right. Any more questions on the Town of Rubicon contract? If not, I'll look for a motion. Jer, Jeff, are you raising your hand?
Yes.
And Elder Person Fulop, second?
Motion by Elder Person Turchi, seconded by Elder Person Fulop, approving the six-year fire service contract between the Town of Rubicon and the City of Hartford.
Any further questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, discussion and consideration approving the 2024 fire service contract between the Town of Hartford and the City of Hartford.
Again, this is one in which it's been a set contract for very many years with the Town of Hartford. We've served them well for many, many years, and they, we have the same amount of sections of the township. We share that township with another neighboring fire department, and the amount that we get goes up based on CPIU, much like we talked about for the Town of Rubicon. And so, there's payment for this coming year will be 141,781.
Questions on the Town of Hartford contract? If not, we'll look for a motion. Elder Person Savage and Elder Person Webb?
Motion by Elder Person Savage, seconded by Elder Person Webb, approving the 2024 fire service contract between the Town of Hartford and the City of Hartford.
Any further questions? If not, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, closed session. The common council is going to move into closed session under Section 1985-1C, considering employment promotion compensation, performance evaluation of a public employee. I'll look for a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Elder Person Reagan and Elder Person Fulop?
Motion by Elder Person Reagan, seconded by Elder Person Fulop, to go into closed session at 7:37 PM.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Don't we have to do a roll call vote to go into closed session?
Do we have to do a roll call? I don't know.
I think so.
I think so, yeah.
I'm just acting here, so. All right, roll call.
Having to pass.
Shannon, go ahead.
Elder Person Rosniak?
Aye.
Elder Person Kohler?
Aye.
Elder Person Reagan?
Aye.
Elder Person Garza?
Aye.
Elder Person Fulop?
Aye.
Elder Person Webb?
Aye.
Elder Person Savage?
Aye.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And Turchi wants to go in too, so yes.
Elder Person Turchi?
He was excused.
I wasn't prepared for you to be here, my bad. So, motion carried, eight to zero.